With just a few words regarding this special meeting before I open up public comment for items that are on the agenda only. The recent tragic deaths of George Floyd and Richard Bricks at the hands of police officers has exacerbated significant outrage and protests throughout the nation. Although the protests initially focused and continue to focus on police brutality against people of color and the need for police reform, the protests have further expanded out to encompass the very heart of racism and concerns over persistent inequality and disadvantage for people of color in our country. An issue is the need to focus on systemic change and the need to initiate community discussions on root cause issues that contribute to these significant injustices and inequality for people of color. The work to address these real issues is a multifaceted and multi-pronged initiative, not just limited to inner cities or areas more commonly known for racist attitudes and police brutality. Community members and groups, including Morro Bay, seeking change have contacted myself and the city of Morro Bay to better understand what we've done and what we can do on the issue of police reform, and I have called this special meeting with regard to that and a request to declare racism as a public health crisis. My response in calling this special meeting is to have our community be able to weigh in and allow our elected officials to discuss the issues at hand concerning all of us with regard to the inequalities and inequities that have existed for such a long time. With that, Zeke, I will open up public comment. Public comment is now open for members of the community. Public comment is for items on the agenda of this special meeting only. Do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, sir. There are a number of people in the queue, and one person has their hand raised at this point.
Great. Go ahead.
Caller, you are online.
Yes, this is Dan Sadeley at Morro Bay.
You're welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm referring to the agenda documents only, sir, and nothing more. My first point is every member of the city council takes a role to support the Constitution. The background of this document says that Officer Chauvin was arrested, and that is a fact. The rest of the paragraph is factually untrue according to the Constitution of the United States. Neither George Floyd nor Officer Chauvin were convicted of the crimes as paragraph alleges. The Constitution says that everyone is innocent unless found guilty by a jury of their peers. Therefore, his background paragraph is unconstitutional as a statement of fact. It should state that Officer Chauvin and George Floyd were suspects of allegedly committing certain crimes. Additionally, if there is to be a nexus between these alleged crimes and racism, there should also have been a finding of guilt to an enhancement charge that these crimes were racially motivated, which takes specific evidence to do so. In the following paragraphs, "A political agenda of protesters is referenced by per capita rates of incarceration," without reference of hard facts related to per capita rates of crime committed by specific races. Specific facts are entirely lacking, and political rhetoric is provided for the basis for the need of this resolution, which I entirely disagree with political resolutions that aren't based in science and fact. No preponderance of evidence is provided by healthcare M.D.s that racism is a public health crisis, which is the subject of this resolution. There is no evidence provided. M.D.s are the source of documenting what is a healthcare crisis and what is not. Based on the above factors, this very political resolution should be tabled or dropped based on the unconscionable way it is presented and based on the lack of all facts concerning this matter. All lives matter. Black lives matter. Police lives matter. Women's lives matter. Jewish lives matter. Hispanic lives matter. Asian lives matter. All lives matter. In conclusion, I agree entirely and support the Morro Bay Police Department and Chief Jody Cox 100% and the prudent leadership he provides. I believe the resolutions he provides to upgrade our police department in concern with the things that are happening are entirely appropriate and show his excellent leadership, as does his workforce in providing the best police force that Morro Bay could possibly have. I further believe that they are underfunded. I disagree with leaving one officer position vacant. I disagree with them being underpaid in regards to the rest of the community, being San Luis Obispo County. I think they actually need more funds, and I would like to be on record in that regard. I believe this agenda, the way it's written, is unconstitutional. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Zeke, do we have any other public comments here?
Yes, sir. We have other people in the queue at this time. Nobody's hand is raised, but we might tell them that...
Yeah, let me just... Ladies and gentlemen, if you do want to provide public comment and you have joined the webinar from a computer by clicking on the link, you must raise your hand in order to be recognized. If you have called via telephone, there are instructions on the screen for you as to how to also access this meeting, and you must also raise your hand. So I'll just wait a minute. Zeke, do you have any hands raised?
No, sir. Not at this point.
Yeah, I'll just wait. Council, bear with me. I'm just going to wait for about 30 seconds to see if we get a hand up again. If you do want to weigh in on public comment on this issue, please raise your hand. It will be noted by our esteemed leadership at AGP, our video service, and we will be happy to allow you to speak.
No, sir. Not at this point.
All right. Thank you for that. With that, I will close public comment for this special meeting.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt you. I had somebody message me and tell me that they're trying to call in.
Okay. That's great. I can wait. Did they indicate what the issue was?
Let me check real quick. Sorry for the holdup.
No, no problem.
They're saying that they're getting an error message and that the site is not letting them in.
Okay. Can we get on the screen once again, Madam Court, the instructions? So on the screen, if you're watching this meeting or live streaming or watching on Channel 20, if you'd like to join the webinar and make a public comment, click on the link noted in the information that's portrayed on the screen. You must use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to provide public comment. You're also may call in by telephone. Telephone number is on the screen. And again, you must also press nine to raise your hand for public comment if you're calling in by phone. And I will wait another minute to see if we can get access. Zeke, anybody recently joined conversation, raise the hand?
Excuse me, Mayor. This is... It would be star nine if you are in a dial-up.
Okay, great. Oh, yes, I see the star on the screen. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Folks, if you called in, it's star nine. Star nine, if you'd like to raise your hand. My apologies.
I'm getting messages that folks are not able to get in, even to listen.
Okay. Well, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to reopen public comment after the staff presentation, and hopefully, Zeke from AGP, if we do get callers, we do have hands raised, if we can let them know that we're going to open up public comment again after the staff presentation, we can do that. Thank you, Don, for that information. So with that, Mr. Collins, let me turn it over to you for the report. Thank you.
Good thing. And you captured the good introductory comments, Mayor, so I won't go over those again, other to say with respect to the comments that came in from the member of the public. Well taken. The staff report was written the day it was published. It's typically not how we do things, but we wanted to make sure we were able to respond in a timely manner and get this issue before the public, so my apologies for that. I won't apologize for the lack of including the massive amount of research that has been done on this issue of disparity, whether it's income, public health, you know, and other facets of human well-being. It's well documented. All you have to do is do a Google search, and you'll find literally thousands of hits on that, so I don't need to go into that and try to defend that piece. Just want to make sure that is very well understood by our community, that the disparities do exist. Typically, we do like to provide those footnotes, but again, one second survey of Google will give you plenty of information if you're really interested in understanding the issue. With that in mind, we have brought forward a resolution that was also adopted by the city of San Luis Obispo regarding the public health crisis component of racism. As we all know, a resolution alone won't do anything primarily to change the issues of inequality and equities in brightening historic wrongs, but it does send a strong message that we are willing to do the good work that's necessary to make that change. And this is something that all Americans should strive to do. The resolution contains a commitment by the city of Morro Bay to engage in that work, and also include... Also, this item could also authorize the mayor to send a letter to San Luis Obispo County Board of Supervisors and a public health officer to declare a public health crisis surrounding racism. The mayor also did provide a video message. It was posted on our YouTube video site, which can be reviewed by the public as well. And as was alluded to, our police chief, Jody Cox, has done an excellent job in modernizing alongside his colleagues in the Morro Bay Police Department, modernizing our police work in terms of training, in terms of professionalism, in terms of how we are accountable and transparent to our community. And we're greatly appreciative of the reforms that have been put in place far prior to this unfortunate incident that happened on May 25th in Minneapolis. And I applaud that great work by Chief Cox. There were eight specific areas that were identified by the Eight Can't Wait Campaign, in which surrounded mainly around the issue of use of force, and Chief Cox will be able to go into discussion on each of those components, as well as a few other items that were brought forward. And then I will touch upon requests to better understand the options related to civilian oversight boards, as well as the question about defunding or funding of law enforcement. So with that, I will turn it over to Police Chief Jody Cox, and I'll pick it up after he completes his component of the report.
Thank you, City Manager Collins. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak on this topic. As Mayor Heding indicated, this has been a tragic event that has impacted all of us over the last few weeks. And obviously, while I believe that California has some of the highest and stringent training standards in the nation, this incident goes to show that there is still more work that needs to be done in our profession. The state of California has enacted many new legislative components to law enforcement over the last year or two especially. Things like SB 1421 for police records and personnel files being released to the public, SB 978, which is applying our department policy, which is online and posted online for our public to view, AB 392, which was from 2019, which is a use-of-force policy outline that changed even Penal Code Section 835A outlining the use of force. And additionally, the California Police Chiefs Association supported legislation on SB 230 for enhancing training standards and guidelines for all of California. So as we move forward and understanding that there is still much work to be done in addressing some of these issues, I'm going to attempt to touch on each one of the Eight Can't Wait issues that were put forth by a group known as Campaign Zero. In their efforts to initiate additional police reforms, they outlined eight areas. The first being requiring de-escalation, the second being a duty to intervene, the third being requiring a warning before shooting, the fourth being exhausting all other means before shooting, five being requiring comprehensive reporting, six banning chokeholds and strangleholds, seven banning shooting at moving vehicles, and eight requiring a use-of-force continuum. As I mentioned, you know, our training standards here in California are probably the best in the nation. I come from, personally, from a training background where I've been a trainer throughout the majority of my career, which has spanned over 32 years. So I believe that currently your Morro Bay Police Department is one of the best-trained and highest-trained agencies that are out there, and we continue to train consistently. That's something that we refuse to set aside, is the amount of training that we do, and it's for this reason. This is a prime example of why we take training so serious in our agency. With that said, I'm proud to say that the majority of these items in the Eight Can't Wait Campaign are things that Morro Bay Police Department has already had in force and within our policies, and I'm going to touch on each one of those a little bit. The first one being the requiring de-escalation. This is also included under the new bill last year, AB 392, and the use-of-force policies. The Morro Bay Police Department has already had a policy specifically outlining de-escalation in 430.6 of our Morro Bay Police Department Policy Manual. And I won't go into that policy in full, but it is online and available to the public to review, but that policy does require officers to intervene when they see something occurring that they believe is wrong, whether that be an authorized use of force or excessive use of force. It does require our officers to intervene, or I'm sorry, to de-escalate prior to that. De-escalation, you have to remember, requires cooperation on the other party. So while we attempt to de-escalate every situation that we have, it is often incumbent upon the other party that we're dealing with to respond and cooperate with that de-escalation process. So again, that can be further found under 430.6 of our department policy. Number two, that's getting into the duty to intervene. Our department policy also incorporates, under Policy 300, our use-of-force policy, and specifically under 300.2.1, is a duty to intercede. Intercede and intervene being interchangeable as far as the terminology of that word. But this requires any time that one of our officers is present and observes another officer using force that is clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances, that officer shall intervene. And the word "shall" is used in the policy, indicating that that officer has not provided an option of whether he should or shouldn't. If he observes what he believes to be excessive force or an unauthorized use of force, it is that officer's duty to intervene, and failure to do so can result in disciplinary actions. Item number three is requiring warning before shooting. And again, this is outlined in our Use-of-Force Policy 300, specifically on 300.4 subsection B, under Deadly Force Applications. We provide a warning any time force is used, and that's not just deadly force. If an officer is going to deploy pepper spray, or if an officer is going to deploy a taser, we provide a warning prior to that use of force to give the subject an opportunity to voluntarily comply with an officer's orders or directives, whether that be to put his hands up, or to turn around and place his hands behind his back. Any of those efforts that we believe force is going to be used, we provide a warning for that as outlined in policy. Under item number four, the topic is exhaust all other means before shooting, and this also came up in the new legislation under AB 392 and SB 230. And this identifies when deadly force is justified, and 230 outlining the additional training for those uses of deadly force. And in that outline is set forth that the intent was that peace officers use deadly force only when necessary in defense of human life. In determining whether deadly force is necessary, the officer shall evaluate each situation in light of the circumstances, and shall use other available resources and techniques if reasonably safe and feasible to do so. Now, given some of these situations are rapidly evolving, the circumstances change in the blink of an eye sometimes, and an officer must react to whatever that circumstance and situation is. However, the policy does require that we try to use these other means, alternative methods, if you would, and going back to the de-escalation tactics that we utilize, and try and use all of those before having to resort to a level of lethal force and/or, in this case, before shooting. This is outlined in the California Penal Code. It is law in the state of California, and it applies to all California police agencies. Item number five specifically covers requiring comprehensive recording and reporting, and this also is covered under our Use-of-Force Policy under 300.5, which is reporting the use of force. Now, that specifically is designed for a use-of-force incident. However, our policy has several others, policy outlines, for additional required reporting topics such as domestic violence, hate crimes, child abuse, elder abuse. So there are several things within our department policy that officers are required to report on when they take place. Use of force is obviously one of those instances. It must be reported and documented, and it must be reported to a supervisor, and then a review is done of each use of force that occurs within the agency. And also, just outline that, as it indicates in the documentation I provided, that this also requires that any use of force is reviewed additionally by an internal review panel known as a Critical Incident Review Board, and in that, we determine if the officer's actions were within policy and were within law. So each use of force goes through that additional step of being through a curb review. Number six covers, I think, one of the biggest topics in the Eight Campaign, which is banning chokeholds and strangleholds. And as I've outlined in the document to you, Morro Bay Police Department does not utilize any chokeholds or strangleholds, and nobody in the time that I've been in this agency has used any method or technique like that. We don't train with those. We do have the carotid control hold, which is still in our policy, as outlined for you in the document under 300.3.4, and the carotid control hold, when applied correctly by a trained officer, has proven to be an effective tool. Now, with that said, we also have to consider how our community feels and how our community responds in light of the use of this tactic or this method in other areas. And although we have not experienced a problem with that here locally, we do listen to the community, and we do understand that this particular technique does have a negative connotation to it, and we are currently reviewing that in our department policy as well. Governor Newsom has issued a directive that the California Peace Officer Standards and Training, the Commission on Post, will be reviewing and removing the carotid hold from training in academies. Therefore, we will also be taking a look at that within our own department policy and determining if that should be removed from ours as a less lethal option. So there will be further review done on the issue of number six, which is the... Although it's listed as banning chokeholds, this is a carotid hold, which is significantly different than a chokehold. Number seven was titled as ban shooting at moving vehicles. This also is something that is outlined within our department policy and has been for quite some time. Specifically, under our Use-of-Force Policy 300.4.1 discusses shooting at or from moving vehicles. Shooting at a moving vehicle is highly discouraged within our policy because shooting at a moving vehicle itself is very seldom effective. The problem being a vehicle in this capacity used as a weapon is very difficult to stop. And I would provide the context that it would be considerable to an active shooter situation where a subject is in a location with a lot of people, and he is intent on shooting multiple people. You're not going to try and shoot the gun out of that guy's hand. He may have multiple weapons. The idea is to stop or eliminate the threat. In the case where a subject may be using a moving vehicle as a weapon in a large outdoor gathering where there are lots of people, shooting at the vehicle itself would be ineffective. The idea would be to eliminate the threat, which would be the driver who's trying to use a 3,000-pound weapon to run down as many people as he can. So I believe that banning this option within a policy could be detrimental, providing that we've seen multiple instances here recently where vehicles have been used as both domestic terrorist weapons and in large groups of protesters. It is outlined in our policy. It is discouraged as a practice, but in a life-saving situation, you absolutely want an officer to have the option to stop the threat of somebody who may be using a large vehicle to injure as many people as possible, and that is further outlined again in our department policy. Item number eight, it covers requiring a use-of-force continuum, and I'll explain a little bit. A use-of-force continuum, if you will, kind of think of a use-of-force ladder, and what that concept was referring to is that you would start at the bottom rung of the ladder, and you would use the lowest form of force available for the situation, that being your very presence when you arrive at a scene and you're asking somebody to comply, and they refuse to comply. You would then go to the next step, which may be verbal judo, where we refer to verbal commands. Now, we're being authoritative in our voice and in our commands, and we're instructing somebody forcefully to comply, and they refuse to do so. From there, you may go physically, put your hands on them to try and take them into custody. If that doesn't work, you would escalate to the next rung of the ladder, which may be pepper spray, and then you may have to respond to using a baton and then to a taser. So that is kind of what the use-of-force continuum, that concept was designed as, is to start at the lowest level and work your way up as the need or resistance required. However, the new evidence-based policies that we utilize, we really didn't want an officer to feel that he had to go through each and every one of those steps to get to a point to protect himself or to protect others. In the old days, when I started, if you failed to utilize each one of those steps, you could be sought at as having skipped a step and then being liable because you didn't use every single step. The way that some of these circumstances escalate rapidly, you may not have the opportunity to go from hands-on to a taser. You may have to go from fighting for your life to lethal force in a split second, and you may not be able to try all four or five different steps in a use-of-force continuum. The new techniques that we teach are to create space and distance. The new techniques that we teach are to create space and distance, to try and get away from the individual, to use better verbal commands, to use whatever methods may be necessary to distract the subject, to create other options and methods of techniques that would work without having to have a scale, so to speak, of every option that you would have to use. So it gives the officer the ability to assess the situation, determine what level of force is necessary, and then only use that level of force which is necessary to affect the arrest, or to take the subject into custody, or get the situation under control. In addition to those eight issues that the campaign had outlined, we received some other additional questions regarding law enforcement conduct. One of those was to ensure protester safety and the right to peaceful demonstration. And I think in the protest that we had here locally in Morro Bay, we did a great job of doing that. We kind of set an example of reaching out to the protest organizers, talking to them ahead of time, laying out clear expectations about what we wanted to have happen, what they wanted to have happen. We explained early on that our goal was to keep the protesters safe, and just as importantly, to keep our community members safe. And I think we had a very successful protest here with that group because we took those steps. We want them to be able to express their opinions and their freedom of speech as they see fit. Our job is not to really interact and engage with them during the protest, but to reach out ahead of time, to help set the rules, to make sure that everybody's going to be safe, and that the event will be peaceful during the time that it takes place. In some instances, you've seen around the country where that has gone completely off the tracks, and officers have been forced to react to different methods, whether that be less lethal, using tear gas, or rubber bullets, or those types of things. Sometimes the officers only have that option to react based on what the crowd does. So I think that's been addressed here, and we do a very good job of that here in Morro Bay. All of our officers are also trained in mobile film force techniques to allow them to deal with these types of assemblies. The next topic that was addressed was to maintain continual use of body cameras for use of force only when needed. The Morro Bay Police Department went to body cameras several years ago. We contract with a company for that. All of our body cameras, and in addition to body cameras, we have in-car cameras, and those are outlined in the Morro Bay Police Department Policy 423. And this policy outlines when the cameras are used. And again, officers are not required to turn on the camera for every single interaction that they have, but officers are to use the camera anytime a police action or enforcement action is going to take place. And with that, I mean, if the officer's getting out of his car and walking into the grocery store, the deli store to get a soda or a sandwich, he's not required to turn on his camera, even though he might have contact with somebody. He may be walking on the Embarcadero and visiting, conversing with a tourist or a pedestrian, and that's not a required contact to turn on the body camera. However, if the officer has been dispatched to a call, or makes a traffic stop, or has any type of enforcement action that he will be involved in, or if during his consensual contacts, it turns sideways, and he believes it's going to have some kind of police action, then he's required to turn on the body camera. And again, that is all outlined on our Policy 423, which is included online. The next topic that is listed is to drop criminal charges against nonviolent protesters arrested during Black Lives Matter protests. And as outlined in the document, our job is to enforce law, is to keep this community safe. We don't ever arrest anybody without probable cause, which is required under Penal Code Section 836. So if a subject is arrested, that indicates that they've violated a law of some sort. Our goal then is to do it as safely and as effectively as we can. Once that arrest has been made, that subject is either issued a citation or booked into the county jail, depending on the level and circumstances of the arrest and the charges. Once that arrest has been made, a report is filed with the district attorney's office. And it is the district attorney's office's job to determine whether those charges will be filed, and whether a subject will be held to answer on those charges. So in the event of, let's say, this example of a protest, if a subject was merely detained or arrested for being involved in the protest, I do not see charges being filed in that type of case. If there had been an order to disperse that had been given, maybe because the protest turned violent, and several people were taken into custody for throwing rocks, or throwing bottles, or damaging property, or vandalizing property, that's no longer a peaceful protest. And that type of action and that type of circumstances would be documented in a report. It would be sent to the district attorney for review, and the district attorney is the one that makes the determination of if charges are filed or not. The police department does not make that determination. And with that, I'll turn it over to City Manager Collins for the last two topics, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Cox. And I got just a few pieces to cover, and then, as Chief Cox alluded to, we want to make sure there's plenty of time for council questions and discussion. National, local, community organizations have also requested that cities like the City of Morro Bay form a formal community oversight or civilian oversight committee of the police department. These committees can take on a variety of forms, and must factor in a variety of legal, financial, and community factors. The U.S. Department of Justice did a review of police oversight committees in 2001 in a publication which is linked in our staff report. City Council may direct staff to come back with a discussion, and a later date, to talk about the various options related to civilian oversight. A critical component of that research is just understanding it's a complex subject, where we need to understand the intersections between labor agreements, state and federal law. There are many available options out there that would need to be evaluated, both to understand how it fits within the unique legal and policy setting in California, as well as the City of Morro Bay, including current state and law and restrictions on access to police personnel records. It should also be noted that Chief Cox did form a citizen advisory committee in 2019, consisting of a diverse representation of our community. He meets with this committee regularly to review internal police policy and provide recommendations to the chief. In addition, Chief Cox has reinstated the Citizen Police Academy in 2019 to help inform the community of how modern policing works in Morro Bay. And lastly, he's launching the Neighborhood Cop Program to help promote interactions between our residents and officers to help establish a more safe community, and really to help build relationships and trust. Morro Bay Police has definitely moved into the realm of community policing, or community-oriented policing for the last five to 10 years, and only been really pushed hard since Chief Cox has assumed the role of chief back in 2019, and are really pleased with the efforts he's made, or should say in 2018, he assumed the role. The other issue that's been discussed quite a bit in local, national, regional medias around the issue of quote-unquote "defunding police." A lot of that stems from, you know, obviously concerns about police brutality, but also some of the other issues related to that in terms of, well, should the police be responding to these quote-unquote "nonviolent" interactions, such as mental health issues, or drug abuse, or homelessness? And we definitely understand that perspective. Certainly, we would love to have those experts in those fields respond to those calls for service, but that just doesn't happen. Federal agencies and the federal government has significantly ratcheted down its social service spending since back to the 1980s, really. And the state has had similar reductions made. So typically, these services fall in the hands of county and city representation or agencies, and a lot of times, law enforcement. So our police officers have become de facto social service workers in addition to maintaining the peace in our community. So if our police officers do not respond to those calls that come from our community members, we don't typically generate those calls, then nobody will be responding to those calls. So we certainly encourage folks who have concerns about that to reach out to our county representatives, to our state representatives, to encourage them to look at how they prioritize their spending, since they are responsible for those social services budgets. It's also important to note that the City of Morro Bay, our staffing for our police department has declined since its height in 2008, prior to the Great Recession, of 23 sworn officers down to 18, one of which is our school resource officer, who's dedicated to supporting the high school and elementary school. We further have held a vacant position in our police officer ranks to address the impacts of the COVID-19 on our budgets. And any further reduction in staffing would certainly put us at risk to be unable to respond to emergency situations like what has transpired in Santa Cruz and Paso Robles over the past month, where we lost a deputy in Santa Cruz, and four officers were shot and wounded in Paso Robles. This definitely brings to light how quickly things can turn, and when you absolutely need that police force to support public safety in your community. And as I said, police are typically the only agency responding to those social services calls, whether it's mental health, drug abuse, or homelessness. Ultimately, we will continue to do that until those other agencies are able to provide sufficient staffing to do that, instead of us doing those. But until such time, that is our responsibility and duty to respond to those community calls for service. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions at council rounds.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, Chief Cox. Very much appreciate not only the staff report, but also, Chief, your detailed response to a number of the issues that were raised by a number of organizations concerning policing and policies in general. I'm going to just hold off on questions for a second and go back to Zeke to find out if we have anybody that does have a hand raised for public comment. I'm going to open up public comment now, again. And Zeke, do we have anybody?
Yes, yes, right here. I'm just...
Sorry, Mr. Miller. I was testing my connection, and I seem to be coming through okay. I was just giving you a little feedback. Here are some hands raised.
Okay. You're going to go ahead and open up public comment?
Quinn, you are on the line.
Hi, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks so much. I appreciate your time and this council for the report and the depth of insight you're providing to the community. And I just want to, I actually live in Los Osos, but without our own council, I consider you to be my leaders. And I just want to really say that this issue is one of the defining moments of our time. And I know it's hard when it hits the reality of the racism that we face in our country and locally every day, when that hits in the midst of COVID, and the recognizing the work that we have to do. But the work is important, and it's the work that's before us. And so I just want to encourage this council and staff to keep going and to not be swayed by the uncertainty and the discomfort that happens when we look at racism that we've been a part of and that we continue to uphold, and that a part of that work is definitely around policing, and another part of that work is around mental health, and it's around education, and it's around how we structure our communities in general. And so I know that Race Matters and other organizations will be looking more deeply into these reports, and we look forward to really continuing conversation with you as a community. And I want to bring, one of the things that was said was about not having adequate resources to meet, if we left, didn't have as many officers, to meet the moment with just PD. And I would encourage the community to, Morro Bay, to really take active steps, not complacent, not waiting for it to happen, but active steps towards putting more resources toward mental health and supporting the organizations that already exist within our community, so that we can meet those needs, those calls that come in, not just with PD presence. Let's support the organizations that are here, so that we can meet them with the professionals that can really meet those crises and those conflicts with adequate resources. So that's, I guess, all I have, but thank you for your work, and I look forward to seeing a lot more from this council in the coming weeks and months and years.
Thank you. I think it was, was it Glenn? Did I catch that correctly? Maybe you should just connect. Well, thank you for the comment.
It's Quinn Brady.
Quinn Brady. Thank you, Quinn. Zeke, do we have other public comment?
Yes, sir. Next speaker is Courtney. You are on the line.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Courtney, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. My name's Courtney Hale. I am a resident of the City of Slow, a neighbor to Morro Bay, and a co-founder of Race Matters. I want to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city staff of Morro Bay for making the time for this special presentation today. I want to thank you for responding to Race Matters and other organizations, and for providing a report in response to the demands. We look forward to reviewing the report and continuing the conversation. Regardless of the black population of a community, and the size of a community, and what's happened up until this point, we believe in doing everything we can to ensure that racial profiling, police brutality, and police violence never are issues in Morro Bay. And of course, racism is bigger than policing, and we encourage you to join the City of San Luis Obispo, and cities across the state and country, to send a strong message by offering unanimous support for adopting a resolution to affirm that racism is a public health crisis. And because we do need more than a resolution, we ask you to join activists in urging public health officials to declare racism a public health emergency, as that's a step that can bring about needed change. Thanks so much again.
Thank you, Courtney. I appreciate that. Zeke, the next caller, please.
Next caller, you are on the line.
Hi, yes, this is Travis Ford, resident here in Morro Bay. I just want to start off by saying thank you so much, Mayor Heding, city council staff, for calling this special meeting. It's truly an important milestone, I feel, for our city, so thank you for doing this. Kind of mirroring what was said before, you know, irregardless of accusations, or in Morro Bay's case, lack thereof, of the EMTO treatment and prejudice against people of color, we really must do everything in our power as citizens in our community to prevent these racially motivated tragedies from ever happening to begin with. I have faith that under Morro Bay's current leadership, we can make great strides to be a better city, and we really must start by declaring this to be exactly what it is, a public health crisis. You know, all lives can't matter until black and brown lives do. And, you know, as we've witnessed both locally, nationally, and globally, this is still something that we must really, truly work together and continue to strive for. That's it.
Thank you, Travis. Appreciate that. Zeke, we have another caller, sir? For public comment?
Yes, sir. It doesn't seem like there's anybody else in the queue.
Okay. I'll just wait one second here.
Excuse me. There are people in the queue, just nobody else with their hand raised at this moment.
I'll just, one more time, ask if you would like to speak, and you're in the queue, please use the raise hand button, or star nine if you called in, star nine if you called in via phone, or if you're on Zoom via the information given on the screen, use the raise hand feature. Just wait a second. Any hands raised, sir?
No, sir. We just have the last caller with their hands still raised.
Okay. Then I will close public comment. Go ahead and bring it back to council for, number one, for questions of either Mr. Collins and/or... and or Chief Cox. Perhaps I will start with maybe a few general questions. And again, Mr. Collins, thank you for your report and your oversight. Chief Cox, appreciate the detailed information that you have responded to again on a number of issues that have been raised regarding concerns nationally about policing, community, equality, equity, and issues of the use of excessive force. I do appreciate your comprehensive report. I did have a few questions for the chief, if I might. Chief Cox, could you elaborate on the type of diversity training? And maybe this is a general comment for both Mr. Collins and for Chief Cox.
Call.
Pardon me. For diversity training that occurs within the department and/or possibly within the city, Mr. Collins?
Absolutely. I'll speak on behalf of the police department. And as an example, I went over these numbers with my training management staff over the last two days. And as an example, some of the training courses that that our officers go to, specifically speaking to these types of incidents, one of them is tactical communication, one of them is crisis intervention training, one of them is racial profiling and diversity training, one of us responding to people with mental illness and other mental health-related courses. We attend principled policing courses, an additional threat assessment and de-escalation courses, and other courses such as consciously overcoming unconscious bias, teaching officers to work, even though we all have some type of unconscious bias, how do we work around that? How do we deal with other folks who we may not always be comfortable dealing with? And as an example, in the last two and a half years, and I say two and a half because obviously over the last six months with COVID, we've not been able to send officers to some of these training courses. But in addition, we've had over 400 hours of training in just those types of courses. So we are very committed and dedicated to training our officers with dealing with these specific issues with our community.
Thank you for that detailed response. I very much appreciate that. The second question I had had to do with, and maybe I'll start with a brief anecdote that might give a comparative analysis of what I'm asking. In my former life, I ran healthcare organizations and in the very early days of healthcare, healthcare professionals that worked for single organizations and, let's say, had less than stellar records with regard to clinical acumen, could often, before there was action taken against license and/or the organization acted on the individual, would move from one facility to another. And the bottom line was, there was no national database of information available regarding clinical issues and/or issues with regard to performance clinically. That all changed in the 90s. Now there is a national database for clinicians such that when any healthcare professional comes to an organization, physician, nurse, pharmacist, et cetera, there's a national database that can be looked at to determine if there are trailing issues concerning performance. My question to you, given that introduction, is, is there a similar database of information for police that exists? Or if not, how do you vet a new hire with regard to the important issues of what I would call police competence?
Excellent question, Mayor. And as far as I know, there is no national database. I did send city manager and council a detailed outline from California Police Chiefs Association, which is a group that we've been working with heavily throughout this process. And in that, one of the platform goals and what we call leading the way is the development of such a database as you're speaking about. And what that database would would do is it would incorporate information on officers who are released from employment or terminated for conduct or criminal activity or other things that would would put them in a national database. So no matter where they went, other agencies doing backgrounds would be able to obtain that information and then would have the opportunity to know what kind of character that individual had. And they would be able to look at prior disciplinary issues and/or criminal issues that that officer may have been involved in. Now, more specifically for us here in Morro Bay, we go through a very detailed background vetting process. Each each candidate that we 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 look at their background, we look at where they've worked prior, we send an investigator that goes to their neighborhoods, that talks to their neighbors, talks to their family members, talks to their employers. And we're looking for such things as personal characteristics, what kind of traits, what kind of attitude and behavior does this person exhibit when they're dealing with the people around them, not only on a job site, because oftentimes an employer will just give you a a standard recommendation that, yeah, he's a great guy, he'd be a good hire. We go a lot deeper than that and we go into the neighborhoods, we talk to, again, family members, we talk to neighbors, we talk to all of those people to try and determine what kind of person that we're looking for. And here in Morro Bay specifically, we're looking for a specific fit. We're looking for somebody that fits the dynamics of our organization, but more importantly, what our community is looking for in police officers. So we have a very detailed and thorough background process. And I'll tell you, it can get expensive because several people that we perform backgrounds on do not pass. And once we've gone through this very extensive and exhaustive process, some of these individuals we've had to pass on, and then we start with a new candidate until we find the one that we believe is gonna be beneficial for our organization and our community.
Thank you, Chief, for that. Third issue that I had questions about being a clinician was the appropriate use of the carotid hold. Obviously, being clinically inclined, I'm very aware of the basal vagal reaction and what a carotid artery hold can do. And I heard you commenting that the governor is in the process of banning this. And I'm wondering, from an equity standpoint and a concern for the safety of police and the effectiveness of police, if Morro Bay were to ban the use of carotid holds, what impacts would you see on your department?
With an all-out ban on the carotid, it would be hard to tell what the impact might be. I have some officers, and myself included, who have extensive experience and training in martial arts, who are well-versed in this particular carotid hold and who have used it many, many times and never had a negative result, never creating a significant injury and never a death as associated with all of the times that we have used it. However, as I mentioned, the carotid hold is something that has to be properly trained and properly executed. You know, the the problem, and which a lot of people refer to, is that in some folks who are not able to properly apply this technique, if your arm slips or the subject moves, again, they're resisting, they're combative, you know, it could, it could translate into a unintended chokehold, which is why it's very important that this this technique is only utilized by people that have been properly trained in utilizing the technique and practice with the technique. The impacts of not having it, again, I'll say, anytime you remove an option from an officer, you're gonna force him to choose something else. And in some cases, officers that are comfortable in applying this technique or utilizing this technique, if they no longer have it as an option, they're gonna have to use something else, whether that be a baton, whether that be a taser, or something other option that they would have to try and affect an arrest without providing injury. I believe statistically, it has been shown that the carotid hold has actually resulted in less injuries than either the taser or the baton. So removing it altogether, it's hard to say what the impacts may be, because again, not not everybody is comfortable in utilizing that technique. So it's not, it's not commonly used or frequently used, I should say. But in the times that it has been used, and by myself personally, it's been effective.
And I assume competency comes with frequency of utilization of the technique. So obviously, not using it in the field significantly, how do you maintain competency for carotid holds above and beyond the initial training?
The the training is done through our, through our weaponless defense training. We send officers to self-defense training, hand-to-hand training, obviously, and then they're required to go through perishable skills training through post. And all of this has been taught through post up until this recent incident. And again, as I mentioned, where Governor Newsom announced that that he would be working to remove it from the post training guidelines. Our officers that attend that post perishable skills training have been trained in this technique multiple times throughout those training courses, in addition to other weaponless defense and hand-to-hand training courses. And again, it's the competency comes through repeated training because it's not something that is used as frequently as some other techniques.
Got it. Appreciate that explanation. The question comes from, again, my background of, you know, you wouldn't want to have your hip replaced by a hip surgeon that does two a year as opposed to the one that might do 100 a year. Competency is usually better. So I thank you for that, given the fact that you don't use it in the field significantly, that explanation, how you maintain competency. My last question is, perhaps in your tenure as chief and maybe in the department of Morro Bay, how many documented incidents involving racism issues, racial issues, profiling or complaints have there been, or can you speak to that?
I can speak to the time that I've been here and in the eight years that I've been with the organization, I'm aware of only two issues that have been brought to our attention as reported as a race-related issue. And in investigating those, it was determined that although one of the parties was was African-American, it didn't appear that the circumstances leading up to the argument, we should say, were based on race. Now, again, people can, the problem is there's just inherently some bad people out there and they're not very nice. And sometimes the way they address people, the way they talk to people is not very kind. And if you're in a minority group or in a vulnerable population, you you may consider that they're targeting you because of your race, when in fact, they're just targeting whoever happens to be near them at the time because they're not very nice people. So in both of those instances, our determination was that they were not specifically race-related.
Thank you, Chief. That's all the questions I have. I want to go ahead and open it up to other council members, start with Councilmember McPherson. Do you have any questions for Chief or for Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions for the chief. You mentioned that you look for people who are a good fit. Could you tell us the qualities that you are looking for? What does that mean? What is a good fit for Morro Bay?
Well, we look, we look for officers who are, who are, have a history of being compassionate, who be, who have a history of being involved in their community. Maybe they've been involved in other civic groups or social groups or youth activity leagues or those types of things. We look for people that are, that are more focused on a community-inspired background as opposed to just a driven stat, I wanna arrest people type person. Because again, you know, Morro Bay is very fortunate and very blessed that we don't have a very high crime rate. So we do a lot of interaction. Morro Bay Police Department is involved in nearly every event that takes place in this city, every large event, and then many events that are sponsored and supported by the police department and even through the Morro Bay Police Officers Association, who sponsors and supports many of the events themselves, which is just indicative that our officers are invested in the community. And when we're looking for officers, we're looking for that type of officer that is not, and I'll use the term hell-bent on writing tickets and taking people to jail, but but that he knows that he's here to serve this community, to serve the public, and to be responsive to the needs and concerns that they may have.
Thank you for that. Let me ask a second question that's somewhat related. How do you evaluate the performance and conduct of your officers?
Our officers are evaluated each year. They go through an evaluation process, and evaluation is completed by their supervisor. That that evaluation is then reviewed by the commander and myself, prior to being sent over to City Hall for permanent record. And we look at many things. One of them, as I mentioned, is what is their community involvement? What events are they involved in? We look at their productivity. But again, productivity in itself, as statistical in nature, is not always the driving force. The guy who writes the most tickets isn't necessarily your most productive officer, but a guy that interacts with the community that, as an example, we, you know, every day on our daily log, one of the topics is community engagement. And we put that on there because it's a philosophy and a way of life within this organization that I expect our officers, and I tell them, and it's kind of a joke to here, is to get out of the car, you know, that we engage with our community. And those are the things that we look for. What do our officers do outside of normal policing? Now, we understand they have to respond to calls for service, they have to address all of those types of needs, but but in that downtime, what are they doing to interact with the community? And those are the things that we take all of that into consideration in an evaluation process to determine what we believe to be is productive.
And have you had to let officers go because they didn't meet the standards of the department?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Chief Cox. I wanna thank you both and Mr. Collins for bringing this forward in a very complete and detailed staff report. Very much appreciate it. I know you have a lot on your plate right now, and I never cease to be amazed by staff reports that you can generate, considering all that you have going on. And I'd like to compliment you, Chief Cox, for how you managed the march a couple of weeks ago as a participant. I was very impressed by how it was handled and I thought you and the the support folks that you brought in just did an outstanding job with that.
Just a sec.
Sorry. Suri is talking to me. I didn't ask her for anything, I promise.
Standby, please.
First question I have is the title of this resolution, which is.
One more moment.
Okay, I'm turning her off. The title of the resolution is "Public Health Crisis." And in another part of the report, it talks about a public health emergency. You know, I don't see safety in there, and I'm just wondering if the word choice for this is intended to perhaps generate a possibility to get funding sources for specific actions that we would like to take? Or is that just the phrase that's being used for some purpose? And I don't know if that's a Mr. Collins question or Mr. Mayor or you, Chief, but I was curious about that.
Yeah, I'll take that one, Councilmember Heller, and thank you for for the compliments on the police work. I've been also been very, very happy with Chief Cox's approach as well as Commander Watkins when Chief Cox was was out of the office. Just really, really good partnership with the the folks who wanted to exercise their first amendment right. I'm really proud of the work that they did. Great question on the the public health crisis component. I mean, in many respects, it's just raising the awareness of the issue and ensuring that it isn't sort of a flash in the pan, you know, as another incident of brutality takes place, that we sort of go back to where we were before. So it's just sort of raising the specter of the issue and asking that our public health officer also do the same thing as, as she's also grappling with another public health crisis in the COVID-19, which is having disproportionate effect on people of color across the country. So it's really just sort of raising the awareness and hoping that there can be systemic change through through that awareness.
Okay, so it's not, those specific words were not chosen for. Okay, so it's not, those specific words were not chosen for funding opportunities, per se?
Yes, it's again, raising the awareness, but the other pieces of those requests made by, by, by groups, you know, encompassed funding as well. And that brought in up the discussion of law enforcement funding and potentially reallocation of funds. And, you know, the way our budgets work, we're fragmented and, you know, cities have responsibility for some aspects. The county has different, the state has different, the federal has different, and nonprofits, somewhere in between all of that. So I think there's a connection there between the crisis and funding. Our, our point is that our, our police department is pretty, it's bare bones as it is. And any, any further reduction would have a detrimental effect on public safety. But I think it does, those two issues are connected.
So I guess the reason I ask is, I'm a little averse to resolutions that are certainly well-intended, but if they're not going to help get us resources to make the kinds of changes that we all want, you know, I just, that's, that's kind of the first thought that
I understand.
Gave to my head.
Just, Councilmember Heller, I'll just add to that because, to use the COVID-19 pandemic as an example, if that were not declared quote unquote, a public health crisis, the level of federal and state and county funding that we have seen would never have occurred.
That's what I'm asking.
Exactly. It does raise the opportunity or the bar, so to speak, to obtain funding for what I'll call systemic issues, if one believes that there are systemic issues contributing to negative public health outcomes. And so the answer is yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And let's see here, my other questions, we talked about Chokehold. The body cam issue is an interesting one in my mind, and I read that in great detail, Chief Cox. And a friend of mine asked me, actually, actually, I see, you know, the national news, you see clips of, well, what happened to the footage? Or I didn't turn on the body cam yet. You know, it's pretty clear in your, your training that when to use it and when not to use it. A friend of mine said, what would it be like if every time an officer had an interaction with a, with a citizen, say, hello, I'm Officer Heller and my body cam is on? And I thought, well, that's an interesting idea because I always hear about, you know, what happened in the initial contact? And if you only knew about that, then you would understand the response of the officer, the officers. What are your thoughts about that, Chief?
Again, it's a good question, Councilmember Heller. And I'll start with this. One thing to remember when we're recording with a body worn camera and/or the in-car camera, all of that information has to be stored somewhere. And, and all of that storage costs money. And, and many agencies that I am aware of have gone away from the body camera system because of the associated costs of storing all that data. In, in addition to that, every, every time an officer comes in at the end of their shift, and in our case, 12-hour shifts, the, the body worn camera is going to be placed in a docking station and it's going to download all of that information. And then at some point, that officer is going to need to go through each one of those recordings and document what that recording is for. So now we're going to have an officer spending a considerable amount of time in the station on the computer, listing what each one of those documented recordings were for. And the majority of those recordings are things that don't need to be kept. They may be just a simple contact, as you mentioned, or, or a traffic stop that resulted in nothing but a warning, those types of things. So that way, if we need to go back and find that information later, or that recording needs to be sent to the district attorney's office, we're able to track it through the body worn camera tracking system. So, so that's the reason that we don't turn them on and leave them on for the entire shift. That and the fact that the equipment really isn't designed, again, those small units, the, the batteries don't typically last for a full 12-hour recording session, which means we would have to buy additional batteries for every recorder that we have to be able to have that kind of, of capacity. So, so a lot of it does come down to, to finances, being able to store the data and have a sufficient battery life and capability to get through 12-hour shifts.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that explanation very much. Yeah, what are your thoughts, Chief Cox, about civilian review boards in Moro Bay?
Well, I, you know, I, I created the chief's advisory committee and that was kind of, kind of my take on, on that process. I wanted to have a, a committee of community members, a diverse group of community members who would be able to help, help us in guiding and kind of directing where we're going in the future. And, and that's what I utilize that chief's advisory committee for. I've, I've worked with them on several new policy developments that we're getting ready to put in place. And I've reached out to them with all of the documentation that I have sent you as council members and city manager. I've also sent that same information to my chief's advisory committee to keep them abreast of all of the changes and the planned reforms and the things that we're talking about today. And with that information, I've reached out to them and I've asked them to prepare that we're going to be looking and reviewing over some of our current policies with some of the planned changes that legislation may enact in the very near future. So, so I utilize them as, as kind of that, that review board process. I guess it would just depend on, on what level of civilian review you were, you were looking for. That might be a, a question more geared towards the city manager of, of what he would expect a, a civilian review board to be looking at or to be looking for and what he would expect from them.
Okay, so is that advisory committee still in place and how often do you guys meet?
It's, it's in place. Unfortunately, with, with COVID, we've, we've not been able to meet in person. We still communicate via email and I'm, I'm working on setting up Zoom meetings with, with that group. We, we discussed that yesterday, just so that we can get back on top of some of these policies and reviewing some of the pending changes that we know are going to be coming down the pike.
So they're going to be looking at the items on this particular staff item here, do you think, Chief?
Yes, sir. They've received, they've received this report, again, along with the additional documentation from California Police Chiefs Association that I sent to all of the council members and city staff.
Okay, great. So another question for you, Chief. So it sounds like a national database for officers does not exist. Do you support a national database? What are your thoughts about that?
Absolutely, I support a national database.
Do you think it's going to be a problem for the union? Or do you think the union will say, yeah, that's a good idea?
I'm not, I'm not part of the union and I'll make that clear because we've had a lot of emails and comments concerning whether myself and the commander were a part of the union. And I'll just throw that out there so everybody understands. The commander and I are not members of the police union. And with that said, we have a very good relationship with our police union. And, and I think we've really been working on, over the last several years that I've been here, we've really been working on, again, developing a, a change in culture of, of what our officers think. And, and I don't know that that's something that they would, that they would really oppose because I think most of those officers are starting to adhere to the same philosophies and traits that the commander and I express daily here, is, is that we've got to be better at the job we do. And the only way to do that is to hold each other accountable. And, and we, we take that to heart. We hold each other accountable. I myself, throughout my career, have, have been involved in numerous internal affairs and criminal investigations on officers that have resulted in their termination. So, so I, I personally highly support that type of database that prevents an officer from leaving one organization and joining another organization and taking those bad habits or those bad tactics or just a bad policing mentality to another organization.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Another question about the language in the resolution. And obviously I don't mean to discount the impact on African-Americans and racism in this country, but I'm wondering if the language should be African-Americans and people of color as part of this resolution? I've gotten emails from, from some Native Americans and other people who I think maybe should be excluded. And I wonder if that was considered when this was drafted? Mr. Collins or Mayor Heding, could you weigh in on that?
Yes, absolutely could add that component if that was the pleasure of the, the city council. This is, this has been primarily the form resolution that's been, been exchanged with cities across the country. And so there is some commonality with cities that have adopted it. But I, I believe the intent would still be held true, but I'll, I'll leave that up to the council to determine if that's actually like to go.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my last question is, if we, if the council adopts this resolution this afternoon, what specifically is going to change about how we police?
I'll, I'll jump in on that, Councilmember Heller. And, and as I said when we started, I'm, I'm very proud of, of your Moro Bay Police Department. And I'm very proud that all of the things that we've talked about here today are things that we're already doing. That's not to say that we can't do more and we're going to continue to learn from recent events. We're going to continue to learn with the legislation that, that may change and may take place for additional reform. But as we outlined in those eight areas that were the topic of the Eight Can't Wait campaign, those are all areas that, that we've been addressing and we're trying to do the very best that, that we can do. And, and, you know, law enforcement has become a, a competitive venture. And, and you have turnover in these organizations and we're, we're actively always trying to recruit the very best, the highest quality candidates that we can find to bring those people into our community to work. So we're going to continue to take every step that we can to provide the absolute best police services we can provide in partnership with our community. And, you know, our, our vision here is excellence in service. And, and our goal is to continue to provide that with everybody that we engage in this city. And, and that's tourists and, and, and community members, visitors, you know, all, all of those people. The motto that we've instilled here over the last year is, is represent well. You may have heard that as a member in our, in our Citizens Academy, you know, every, every individual in this organization is deemed to be a leader and that's what I expect of them. And, and if I can continue to instill that philosophy within our individuals and our staff here, we're going to continue to improve upon the services we provide to this community.
Well, I, I appreciate your leadership. And one thing you said earlier struck me, that you ask your officers or ask that they do is get out of your car. And it sounds like a very simple thing, but it really struck me. And please continue with, with that direction. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Davis, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Davis, questions, sir?
Yes, thank you very much. And Chief, I appreciate your answering the questions that I sent to you before the meeting. And, and you incorporated your answers into your presentation, so I'm not going to dwell on those any longer. But a couple of things I do want to ask about, and one is the Neighborhood Cop program that you mentioned. We already have in place in Moro Bay, a Neighborhood Watch program. So can you talk about the, the difference between Neighborhood Cop and Neighborhood Watch and when you expect to initiate the Neighborhood Cop program?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, great, great question, Councilmember Davis. The Neighborhood Watch program i- is, is an old concept. It's been around for a long, long time and it's, it's incorporated in many communities. And the Neighborhood Watch concept is really neighbors within a small community interacting with each other, joining, joining together, becoming familiar with their neighbor, kind of being the eyes and ears of police in that neighborhood, watching for suspicious activity and, and being able to report that to police and that kind of thing about, about keeping a, a small inclusive neighborhood. The Neighborhood Cop program is something that's developed by the organization for the community as a whole. So even if you're not living in a specific neighborhood, the, the design behind this program is that officers are going to be assigned to a specific geographical location or beat, if you would. And anybody that logs onto this program, it's going to be a web-based app that you'll be able to log on to. Depending on where your geographical location is, when you log on, it's going to say, hey, Officer A is your Neighborhood Cop. You're going to be able to reach out and communicate directly with Officer A. Maybe it's questions you have about quality of life issues just in your neighborhood, barking dogs or an unruly neighbor or that car that's been abandoned in the neighbor's front yard sitting on blocks for three weeks. Those types of things, we want, we want the community to be able to reach out and get to personally know and interact and build relationships with the officers. And the Neighborhood Cop program is going to be able to do that. You'll be able to interact with the officer. Each supervisor will, will have oversight to make sure that when, when a, a community member reaches out to an officer, that the officer is responding. And again, as our officers work 12-hour shifts, he may be on a three-day-off period. But if somebody sends in a request to talk to an officer, there will be at least two officers assigned to each location. So if one officer is on his days off, a second officer will be able to pick up that request and answer it in a timely manner. And then the, the oversight by the supervisor and the commander will ensure that all of those responses are, are, are answered accordingly. So there will be some other features within that app. As I mentioned in my response to you, we're, we've been working on this for quite a while. Commander Watkins has done a phenomenal job on, on putting together the final details on it. And we're hoping to be able to launch the program for testing this week. We're going to, we're going to test it with some of our internal components, being our Neighborhood Watch members and our chief's advisory committee members, to make sure that we work out the bugs, work out the kinks of this app, as with any computer-based program. We want to make sure that, that it works before we launch it to the public, hopefully within another week or so. In addition, we're going to have the ability for people to contact us directly through this app, but also give us the opportunity to push out notifications and push out information to everybody that signs up. So you, you'll be able to receive information if we have a, an active shooter event or we require a school lockdown or, or anything like that, we'll be able to push that information out immediately and timely and keep our community up to date based on that app process.
That's terrific. Thank you so much for that. And then a question, I'm not sure if it's for you or for Scott. So much of what our police officers do, their judgment in the field depends upon training, both initial and current training. And you said earlier that the, the post-training has been postponed temporarily because of COVID. And I know also that our officers have been working long shifts, working on their days off, and even if the training were available, have not, would not have been able to attend. So what do you and city manager Collins see as the future of the training efforts for our police department?
Well, I, I'll be happy to answer that. So, so really, although some of the in-class type training courses have been suspended due to COVID, that didn't stop some of our training processes. We continue to train. Post has gone to an online platform with a lot of their training as well as additional, there's, there's just literally dozens and dozens of police training companies out there that provide online training platforms. And we continue to, to take advantage of those opportunities. So as an example, instead of me having an officer on his day off respond to, and I'll use Paso Robles as an example, who's holding a training course, I'll have that officer respond to the police department on his day off and he'll, he'll take a training course online on a video portal here. That, that also gives us an opportunity to train additional officers through that process. So again, we're, we've not stopped training. We've just had to adapt to some different methods of training. We also are trying to take advantage of as many Train the Trainer courses as we can, which means we send our experienced officers to train the trainer courses. And then we have that officer come back and he will then, or she will then, train all of the rest of our in-house officers on that particular subject matter.
Terrific. Okay, thank you very much. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Addis, please, questions? Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Addis, please, questions?
I just have one question. And most of, most of what I had asked has already been answered either through questions from other council members or via email. And so I want to say thank you to the chief for spending so much time on this. I know there's a lot to do. I am wondering, and maybe you already answered this, I think it's more for the city manager, but does Morro Bay have any mental health community resources that council or that our budget could better support? One of the callers mentioned that they believe we should put more emphasis on supporting the mental health resources that do exist. And I understand that funding is needed from the county, as well as from the state and federal levels, to fully support the mental health needs across the community of Morro Bay. But is there anything else that we can do in regards to community resources that exists and how we might shift resources to support them?
Good question. I know that the county has extended some resources to do more critical incident training, or CIT, that has, it's typically specific to mental health or drug abuse responses and, or, you know, co-occurring issues with homeless population, which may be all three of those. But as far as direct resources, you know, for instance, it came from Santa Cruz, and there was a partnership between the county and the cities where they would have mental health liaisons who would, in essence, ride along with the police officer. In Santa Cruz, there was a thousand homeless people lived out of doors. So it's a different scenario than here in Morro Bay. But nonetheless, it's an example of a partnership with the city and county. We've requested that type of service here. We just have not received support on the other end. And I don't think it's for a lack of trying. I just know there's a lot of competing demands at the county. But there was an emphasis heading into this year around addressing some homeless issues at the state level. And I believe some of those funding, fundings will still be available. I think it's primarily around homelessness, but a lot of times homelessness and mental health issues occur at the same time with individuals, so there could be some overlap there. But I think a lot of it just comes down to requesting that from the county and state to to look at how they allocate their funding. There isn't anything we can give, you know, the city doesn't have the expertise to say, well, we're going to create a mental health position within the city of Morro Bay. We don't have the expertise to train that or oversee that function. That belongs with public health. So I hope that helps.
Could I add something? This is Marla McPherson. I wanted to say that Transitions Mental Health and Mental Health Professionals to the Community Dinners on Monday night, and they have been doing that for a couple of months until the COVID crisis hit. So we do have a resource that is available at least once a week to provide counseling and mental health services.
Yes, and if I can jump in here, I'll just touch on what Councilmember McPherson is referring to. And we do work closely with Transition Mental Health with their Met team. And we have, as City Manager Collins has indicated, we've reached out to the county and some of our neighboring police agencies who have a program in place where they're getting support from mental health services. And we're trying to be included in that program to where hopefully we can get somebody to come and spend one day a week in Morro Bay to help us address some of those issues as they come up. The issue with Transitions is when we respond to a call for service, and it's basically a mental health-related call, and really, there may not be a criminal element to it, and it's just specifically mental health, Transitions also is working very shorthanded. And when we make that call, many times, they don't have any staff available to respond to Morro Bay. And that requires us to be, to have to transport that person. First, they require that they be transported to a hospital for medical clearance, even though they may not be talking of any medical concerns whatsoever, but they require a medical clearance. So then that officer has to respond to a slow, take them to a medical facility, wait for them to be medically cleared, and then hope that a mental health individual will be able to respond to that location and then evaluate the person to determine if they meet the effective criteria for that type of hold.
Other questions? Councilmember Addis?
That was my only question after hearing from all of the other council members and receiving responses to my emails. That was my one that was left unanswered. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. So with that, we've completed council questions. I'm going to bring it back and open it up for discussion and/or a motion. Before us, we have a recommendation to consider approving Resolution Number 64-20. And then any other recommendations regarding the discussion at hand today that has occurred. And let's see, Councilmember Davis, would you like to start us off?
Yes. If I can, sorry, trying to get my computer.
Didn't mean to catch you like, my apologies. I have different orders that I go in here, and I had you first this time. Thanks.
No worries. There is no doubt in my mind that racism is a public health crisis. And I support the resolution. I think that COVID has focused attention on the fact that the African-American community is disproportionately adversely affected by this pandemic, as well as many other health issues. So I support the resolution. And in fact, I will go ahead and move that council adopt Resolution Number 64-20, affirming that racism is a public health crisis and recommending that public health officials declare racism as a public health emergency.
I'll second that. So we have a motion by Councilmember Davis for approval of Resolution 64-20, seconded by Councilmember Heller. And so Councilmember Davis, thank you for that discussion. Councilmember Heller, your discussion, sir?
I have nothing to add to that. I support Councilmember Davis's comments completely. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Scott Collins.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember McPherson?
Yes, I just want to say that I think we're really very forth here in Morro Bay to have the police department that is compassionate and that is community-oriented. And we have the leadership as well. And I fully support the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
I also fully support the resolution. And I want to recognize my colleagues and recognize staff for their support for this and for putting this together so quickly and for paying so much attention to this issue. And I think we have a new opportunity to make a difference here. I do hope that eventually a resolution like this would lead to public funding for a health crisis. I think we're opening the door to that, and I appreciate that. And I want to say thank you to my colleagues for that. And I don't, I'm going to ask a question. I don't know if it's part of this motion or not, asking for the letter to go to the county public health officer to ask them to do the same.
I'll let Chris weigh in. But Chris, I assume by, if this is approved by council, that it would automatically authorize the mayor to send the letter to the county public health officer and county board of supervisors?
The answer is yes. Council Policies and Procedures 3.1.5 expressly states that, at the discretion of the mayor, written communications supporting previously agreed-upon policy issues by the council may be sent. If this resolution is passed, then there will be council support for the four sections in the resolution. The first one broadly states that the city council affirms that racism is a public health crisis. So if the council passes this resolution, then the mayor, under Council Policies and Procedures, can send letters to public health officials, officials, officers, other public entities, expressing what the council has expressly supported through this resolution.
And does the same, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Don. That's fine.
Does the same go for requesting funding for mental health from county, state, and federal levels, or is that a separate?
I think that these four sections are broad and that, you know, at the mayor's discretion, you know, he can act upon these four sections in the resolution. Council Policy and Procedures, like I said, Section 3.1.5 is pretty clear and somewhat lengthy on when the mayor can or cannot send letters on behalf of the council. Unless there is a broad policy position taken by the council, then the mayor should not be sending those letters unless there's a request from an agency like the League of California Cities. In that case, there's a different procedure to follow. But yes, I believe that if council passes this resolution, it would be clear that the intent of this is to seek to address the issue of racism as a public health crisis. And if the mayor wanted to indicate whether he's going to send some of these letters or send a letter, he certainly could do so. And that would be, you know, at his discretion under Council Policy and Procedures.
And Councilmember Addis, you have my commitment that if this resolution passes, that that indeed will occur, and I'll summarize in a moment.
That would be my preference if this passes, that we have letters on both issues. I think, you know, there's many issues that we are talking about today. Part of it is, you know, police brutality, and I appreciate the chief's time on that. Part of it is how we can allocate resources, but Morro Bay seems to not have the resources to allocate. And so we need to request resources in terms of mental health support. And then part of it is the recognition of racism as a public health crisis. But we don't have a public health officer as part of our city. So we have to request that the public health officer outside of our city would declare racism a public health crisis. So I very much support it and would very much appreciate that those letters were sent on behalf of our city as well.
Thank you for those additional comments. I do support, obviously, the resolution. I want to add once again my thanks to staff, Ms. Collins, thank you. Chief Cox, thank you for your report. As I mentioned previously, we are proud of our police department and police force. We highly value the service that you provide to the community, you and your staff. One of our highest callings is to ensure public safety. I believe that not only you, but your staff are sold out to making that happen with minimal use of force. And recognizing the work that you've done to ensure that there's accountability for that is very much appreciated. I support the resolution. In addition to that, my plan would be to raise the issue of funding that a conversation has occurred at the county level on a number of occasions in different committees that I have served on. There's a recognition countywide that there's a lack of state and federal funding, as well as county funding to adequately address social issues, such as drug abuse, substance abuse issues, homelessness, and a number of other issues that are really more responsive to social worker intervention or mental health worker intervention. But because of lack of funding, often falls on public service agencies, such as police departments in communities, as well as fire departments. And although I believe there's a fair amount of training with regard to social issues, that's not the primary responsibility nor the primary training of those public agencies, such as PD and Fire Department. And it makes it very difficult to, to, I think, deal appropriately with a number of the issues that we've talked about. In addition, I do believe that racism and what we've talked about is nationally a public health issue. I believe by sending this resolution to the county, it raises the awareness, as well as to the state, that because it is a public health crisis, that there should be funding available to address the systemic issues involved in racism throughout this country, but also more specifically within our county and our communities. So with that, I will, before I ask for a roll call vote, there are two items I'd like to see, if council agrees, brought back for further discussion. One would be a further analysis from the chief on the use of the carotid hold. I don't feel comfortable giving your explanation, chief, banning it at present because of the extensive training that you have indicated that the department goes through. But I do have concerns about that. But I don't want to, at this time, make that recommendation. I would like to hear further what happens at the state level and how that affects us at the local community level if the governor does move forward to remove this from training or ban this. And then secondarily, in the future, perhaps in the next few months, further report back about your community organization and some more specifics on how accountability is built in with regard to the vetting of police performance issues. I don't mean individual police officer performance reviews, but general issues of police performance and how that process works with regard to the committee. It would be interesting to hear further information on that for me. So with that, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion that was made by, let's see, I'll look back here, Councilmember Davis and seconded by Councilmember Heller for approval of Resolution 64-20.
It's Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
The mayor, Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you again, staff, for this important presentation and the information you've provided. Thank you, council, for weighing in on this. We've begun a community conversation that I think will continue into the future. That ends this meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be in approximately 45 minutes at 5:30 PM this evening, June 23rd, 5:30 PM via Zoom. We will see you then. Thank you, and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, everybody.